Hello, everybody. It is Gary Dennis, your candidate for Richland II School Board coming up this November, the election this November. Last night on 27 February 2024, they had a board meeting. So this is just a quick recap for you guys out there. And so we're gonna, my recap is gonna skip over the personal stuff that they got on there, such as contract stuff, because that's all presented in an executive session for privacy of jobs and, and the minors that they have, the children that they got either send to Blythewood Academy or not, and disciplinary issues. That stuff is not privy to public information because they're minors. So, but they do come out in public and they vote for it. So, but we're not gonna start on that. What we're gonna get down into, they had an inspirational pledge, inspirational moment, then they do the pledge of allegiance. And then they, they went into item 5.1, which is the reckon, recognized state and national award recipients. So, starting off the bat, we have Alyssa Rayner. She's a teacher at Pontiac Elementary School. And she is, the award was South Carolina Music Educators Association Hall of Fame Award. That was pretty cool to see that she won that. And then Ridgeview High School, Spring Valley High School, won the, and Sandlapper Elementary School, they all won the 2024 Top Magnet School of Excellence Award. So, that breaks down in there. That was 5.1. Then they moved into 6.1, which is the consent agenda. They voted, you know, that's where they basically approved the minutes from the last meeting. And they, they dealt some employment releases and in district transfers and things like that. Then they had some public participation. And during public participation, they had a teacher that's retired. And she talked about why teachers choose to retire as soon as they can. And that was kind of eye opening, because she did state that when she retired and left the district, she did not get a exit survey. And everybody should be getting these exit surveys, so we know what to fix in the future. All right. And then they went into the voting on executive session items, that's 8.1 through 8.6. Basically, student appeals, admission requests, personnel matter regarding employee, employee contracts, recommendations and certified releases, personal matter regarding superintendent's evaluation goals. And then as needed items discussed in the executive session. But then they went into unfis, after they voted on all that, they went into section nine, which is policy revision proposal for policy, BBA, the Board Powers and Duties. So basically what this is, is the Board Powers and Duties. It talks about things the Board needs to do. Okay. So, one of the issues is visiting the schools. So, it used to, the policy said, and it still is policy, because they haven't voted to change it yet. But they do want to change this out. They want to get rid of, "Board members should visit schools with full knowledge and, of, and coordination with staff, including the superintendent, principals, and other supervisors." And the reason why, because state statute, it's pretty clear there, if you are elected to school board, you're expected to go out to schools. And I will say this, it is hard for school board members, because most of them have real jobs throughout the day. I mean, this is not a full-time job. So, if they're out and they can plan that day, like, let's say I'm showing a house over up towards Lake Carolina. Okay. And I'm right there at Lake Carolina Elementary. I got 15 minutes. I should be able to run in there and just walk through the halls, get a feel of the place, see what's going on, poke my head inside a classroom, but not disturb anybody. When, to me, when you take the time and you call and you let everybody know you're coming and all that stuff, it's, this happened in the military. Everybody freaks out. Oh, the board member's coming, the superintendent's coming, let's clean up. They're, they're gonna be here in 20 minutes. Let's, all hands on deck. Make sure you got this, make sure. Listen, that stuff doesn't matter. All I would care about, if I'm in there, is these, is A, is it clean? Is it safe? And are these kids learning and having a good time? That's what it comes down to. Basically, what you need to be in there looking for, you let the people do what they do. That's their jobs. That's the teachers, your TAs, all that stuff. Really and truly, what you're looking for is, because you're voting on budget items, you're looking to see what shaped the schools in. You're looking to see, hey, these walls are pretty bad. Like, what, what do we got coming up? Because there's always that list document where they talk about this is what we're doing in the schools. Well, it's fine and dandy, you see that on a document, but wouldn't it be nice to actually see what's going on at a school? So, I think that's a good step in the direction that they're going for. And then that, that was the only thing they wanted to change on there. Oh, and then they wanted to say, "Board members may make visits to schools or classrooms." And they took out after making arrangements for visitations through principals in various schools. So that means they can just stop in and get a quick look. And I think that's the way to do it. Because you are elected official of these schools, you should be able to go in there and, you know, you check in at the front office, because you got to, because you're not an active member of that school. It's just the same thing as you got a member at, let's say Round Top goes over to Blythewood Middle, they still have to check in at the front desk. It's the same thing. You go through five, 10 minutes in and out. And then you don't disrupt anything in the day, because you didn't make an appointment to do all that stuff. So that's kind of all you got there. There was no action, nothing on there. They requested a few other things. Normally, normally that stuff pops up, but because there's no action, there was no motion needed. They didn't have to do it. I just forgot, but there was, it, it was talking about the state statute and things like that. So then, after that, they went into new business with no action requested, where they talked about the academic update. So, the academic update is really, really kind of cool. They, they, they did a board presentation on academic presentation. And they talked about what they're doing to help with math and some other things. They talked about background testing and achievement results and COVID impacts and action plans and things like that. You know, one of the thing in the elementary, they talked about the elementary trending and patterns. What is working well is the increase, increase, increased math instructional time. You know, basically 75 minutes daily in increased use of academic vocabulary and resources and targeted mathematics, professional development for teachers and administrators. And they also added three additional math coaches. Those three additional math coaches in those elementary areas, though, it doesn't go out through the whole thing. It's only schools that have high Department of Defense, basically military children in there, because that was paid through a DOD grant. So that was in there. And then they talked about the areas for improvement that needs. And they said, "Teaching math with the curriculum fidelity by using all components." And they talked about the components of learning. Listen, and here's what they said. "The way they teach math now is not how we learn math or anything like that. I might not agree with all that, but that's the new way. That's the State Department of Education, so we go with it." And then they're also, they're looking at, for areas of improvement, increasing the use of small instruction groups. So that's where you kind of break the whole class down and you sit down and you do some instructional groups. And I know a lot more about this, because my wife actually, this is what she does. You know, she sits down with reading and vocabulary and mathematics, and she breaks down to a few kids and helps them out. So I get to see that firsthand, like when I go visit or drop off something. And then they talk about the CRA model, which is the concrete re-presentational and then abstract. And that's, that's a whole thing you can look up. If you go to the agenda, you can click on all this and look at all these slides. They talked about the math lessons in K through five. That's the dig in, explore and grow, think, grow, show, grow, apply, grow, and then modeling real life. So it is pretty cool. And then they went into the middle school areas. And what's working well in middle school is they increased time before, during, and after for school mathematics. They added tutors during the day for mathematics, increased, let's see, gotta look over here. Increase the classroom observations and coaching opportunities with feedback. And they also expanded student and teacher resources with professional learning. So that's helping these kids in middle school with math. And I'll get to something towards the end of this. And then areas that they needed for improvement, teaching all the math curriculum with fidelity by utilizing all the components. That's the same thing as elementary, continuing to recruit mathematic teachers. All right. And increasing the use of small group instructions. It's a little harder in elementary and middle school, because the classes are a lot, are bigger. And then what's working well in the high school, they provided intense support to underperforming high schools. If the high school wasn't performing, they put more support to that high school. Adjusted teacher placement and scheduled to meet student needs. They, if they had a teacher teaching another math, but they were really good veteran teachers that used to teach algebra, they would move them in to help with underperforming classes. Expanded student and teacher resources that include professional development. They offered virtual tutoring four days a week, and they conducted regular graduation rate CCR check-in sessions. All right. And then, of course, the areas for improvement that they were talking about was the fidelity by utilizing all the components and expanding the professional learning opportunities and modeling for teachers to support struggling students. Continuing to recruit mathematic teachers. That's one of the biggest things I keep seeing over and over, mathematic teachers. Mathematic teachers, because math is not a teach-all thing. Not everybody can teach math. Not everybody can teach reading. They talked about mid-courses and things like that. And they added training for TAs and guest teachers to help them with this. They conducted regular math classroom fidelity checks. They added math professional learning series for principals. They continue to refine practices and provide consistency with expectations. Recruiting and retaining high qualified teachers in the areas of mathematics, science, and sped. You know, addressing learning gaps and experiencing chronic student absenteeism. So, you know, there's a lot that goes along with that. So, you know, also in there, they have the breakdown of the dig-in times and all that. So I highly suggest you go to the website. And I will have that link in the description. The agenda, so you go to the agenda of 27 February 2024, click that, then just go down and you can look at each instance that they pull up. Okay. After that, you know, the, the thing is, COVID set us back in math and reading and all that. But we were also, if you looked at the numbers, we were starting to show numbers before COVID of a decline. So my thought is, if we're declining in these numbers, what, why will we decline in the first? Like, we gotta take COVID out of there. We can't utilize that, because there was just no data during that timeframe. I mean, kids were not with their teachers. They were virtual. Some kids excelled, some didn't. So that threw everything off. But before everything was happening, though, we starting to see a decline when you looked at the numbers. So that could be something that probably needs to be looked at a little bit harder to see why we need all this help. Where are we failing at to get, to need the extra help? Are we moving kids along too fast? I don't know. There's a lot of data out there that has to be looked at. So after that, they moved on to item 10.2, which is the budget survey results. Okay. The budget survey results, they talked about that. It was a PowerPoint. And basically, it was a survey sent out to the employees and where they thought budget should go. So they sent 4,800 and, no, they didn't. It was 4,581 surveys out. Only 1,410 employees participated. Let's look. Those two numbers are correct. So they had a 31% response rate. You know, the people that presented this, they talked about 31% response rate is actually good for a work survey such as this. Sadly, it is good numbers in the business world. It is good numbers. But also sadly is only 31% gave you an idea. So I mean, it's just, it is what it is. I would like to see more. And hopefully in the future, we can get more, because the more data we have, the better we can be. So the response by categories, basically classroom teachers had 604 participants, so 43% of classroom teachers done this survey. Educational specialists at 17%, which is 236 participants. Instructional assistants, 163, which is 12%. Other support staff is 103, which is 7%. Administration is 125 participants, and that's 9%. And other is 179 participants, 12%. I forgot what they said the other was. But, you know, then they had that broke down. And then they had response by placement, like what part? So 2% of child development talked, you know, did the survey. 41% of your elementary schools did it. 16% middle school, 24% high school, and multi-school levels are 6%. And the district staff is 12%. So district-wide responses, you know, they, they talked about where they should put money and, and items to help issues. So, you know, some of the biggest ones out there. Let's see here. Something that stuck out to me was 60% strongly agreed that they need to do something about safety and security. Okay, so that was a big one. 47% said they need to do more for special education. And that was an eye-opener to me. But 79% talked about competitive salaries, benefits, and bonuses. No surprise there. Academic intervention for lower achieving students, that was 62%. So with those right there, that, that says there's some work to be done. There's a lot of work to be done, and not just from the administration side, but from the school board side. So this actually helps a school board member come up with ideas. So, a lot of things I thought about running that I needed to fix, that I seen out there is definitely, you know, figuring out the money aspect for paying teachers to be competitive. And they'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then the academic intervention for the lower performing students. Like, you gotta throw money at things, because you're gonna have to buy some other things to do this. And now it's balancing the money we have. What is working, what's not working? You know, that's where, you gotta get rid of stuff that's not, and you gotta go to the stuff that is. Now, the other thing is the safety and security. That's a big thing on my book. I really think that needs to be looked at heavily. I will say, there was some other instances in here. 58% of the survey talked about, you know, they strongly agreed that student behavior support, such as behavior interventionist, social, emotional, mental health services, you know, they need more of that. Also, 55% looked at school counselors, psychologists, social workers, health services, need more of that. So that's kind of in there. Some of the lower things, you know, it really, it really wasn't a surprise on some of the other things. But the teacher responses, the top three in the teacher's response was the salaries, benefits, and bonuses, the academic intervention for lower achieving students, and safety and security. That was a three for teachers. The educational specialist responses was 83% of those was competitive salaries, benefits, and bonuses. And then they also talked about academic intervention for lowest achieving students. And the behavior support also made their top three. Instructional assistance. They talked about competitive salaries, benefits, and bonuses, the academic intervention for lower achieving students, and also safety and security. They talked about that. And then they had open-ended responses, and they said they read all those. You know, we won't ever get to see those, but that's, they read it. Then they gave an update to the budget timeline. What this does, it allows the school board to know where they need to prioritize funds when they're coming up with the budget, the new budget. Which is, you know, will be the July to July timeframe, somewhere around there. And, you know, they'll have to prioritize the budget and have to get it. They'll have to ask Richland County if they need to, if they're wanting to get more tax-based, they'll have to ask Richland County and see if they can get it. If not, they'll have to figure it out for themselves. And that's a good thing. That's a good thing. Instead of asking for more money, we need to see where we're at, because in the years past, we've asked, we've asked, was asked. We got a new, predominantly new school board on there, so let's see what they can do financially, fiscally, and see what ideas they have. After that, they talked about a classification and compensation study report. And this was a scathing report, the way I felt. It wasn't bad for this school board, but they talked about the, the past board, how they did this, and it just fell away. And the guy that was presenting this said, "Well, now this new board, you know, y'all asked for it, Dr. Moore." When she came in, she's like, "Where's this at? Where's it?" And it's like a whole new rocket ship has taken off to do this, and this is a good thing. So, this is really business stuff. Okay. This is business, and it's how to make your company, school board, or not school board, but the school district, the best, so that we can get the best teachers, the best everything. Not that teachers in another part of the state are not good. It's just, we want them to come to us. We want to attract them. We want them to take over our vacancies that we do have. So, there was a lot that went into this. Basically, they needed, one of the things was they needed to reword the jobs, because they're doing a lot of things that's not in the job description. So that can throw people off, too. That needs to be done, because it hasn't been done in years. Okay. They, they looked at different markets, seeing how markets are with the jobs that we have. And, you know, they reached out to Greenville, Charleston, Ory, Richland One, City of Columbia, Richland County, also Durham, Cabarrus County up in North Carolina, Henry County Schools out of Georgia, Norfolk City Public Schools out of Virginia, so that we can see the area and see what we need to do to make us better. Okay. So there's 209 job titles, and it's a step plan to, unified plan to create all the district title position titles, to redo that. So people know what they're doing and kind of figuring that out. They talked about the money that it'll cost and whatnot, but it was very, it was very scathing in the fact that the presenter is hired by us, and he's talked about how the luster and the drive of Richland II has kind of went away. And, you know, everybody wanted to be here back in 2016, 2012, all that stuff. And now that, that's gone away. And I have seen that myself, and that's why I'm running for school board. And, you know, also by doing this, it aligns these jobs so that people think it's fair across the board. Because you might be wondering, "Why are they getting a raise and I'm not? We're doing the same job." Well, technically, they might not. It's their job title. They technically might be doing something else, but the job title is yours job title, but the description's totally different. So they're looking to separate all that, so that there's no misconception what your job title is for what you're being paid for. That's a good thing. They talk about the best practices and recommendations for all this. And they definitely talked about how HR needs to pick up, and they need to measure both staff and senior leadership expectations. HR should provide a cost-benefit analysis, including return of investment and, oh, well, I'll just click that off. And a few other things that they gotta do in HR. Perform regular pay audits, things like that. Focus on the whole person. Well-being is everything a real HR department would do in the business world. And sadly, in the government world, they kind of falls to the wayside. It's no, no fault on their own. It's fault on the way government works. But, you know, you want business-minded people running this portion of it. To me, the school board is more business and policy-oriented to have it, but you're working in conjunction with your superintendent that's education-based, all the people that's in the administration over there, listen to your principals, your teachers, all that to make the most informed decision and go that route. And that's, that's one of the things I think needs to be done. And that's why I am running for school board, because I think I can bring a lot to the, a lot to the table with this. Okay, so after that, they moved on to the quarterly financial report. No surprises in the financial report. Really and truly, everything looks, I mean, it's already budgeted out. I don't see any overages that we're gonna incur. There's some definitely overages in there, but they will balance out by the end of the year. We haven't spent everything that we allocated for yet. So I would love to see what that budget's gonna be towards the end, to see if we actually save some money. Because if we save money, that's where we can do things for other things. Okay. So, you know, they still have some funds out there that they can utilize. So after that, they talked about board member conference updates, things that they learned at the board, at the School Board Association meeting. They talked about, "This is great, that's great." We're not gonna dwell on that. But then they did, they did introduce some new business, which is the Employee Referral Incentive Pilot Action Requested. So, the, the vote went by Ms. Porter motion. I move to amend the previous motion. Okay, wait a second, because there was two. So basically, they're offering $250 incentives if you can get somebody to sign up to be a teacher, a certified teacher. Okay, anybody that's in the school district that works there can get it. So, I mean, they can get it. Okay. So, everybody voted for it. The $250 not present. Ms. Nash was not present. Lindsey Agostini abstained. And the yes votes were Joe Trout, Tamika Washington, LaShonda McFadden, Nikki Porter, and Monica E. Scott. And that was for the 200, that was to approve the employee $250 thing. Okay. There was two, it was, there was some discussion, is $250 enough? That's why Ms. Agostini's, she thought that they needed more time. And she was looking at, can we give more than 250? But they did state that they had looked at districts around us, and 250 was what it was, and the will of the board voted, and that's what it's for. The PDF portion of that, then plot, is, is basically to increase both retention and recruitment efforts. Okay, this is as simple as it can be. It's $250 incentive to employees who refer certified teachers for employment in Richland II, would actually come out of this year's budget, because they have some money left over for the bonuses and stuff like that. And that's where this money would come from. This incentive will be paid after the May 10th contract. They were also talking about, you know, that's a little soon, why does it, these people don't, they sign up, they do all this, but then they don't start work? Well, the way the budget does in the government, they have to utilize this money. Now, in the future, because this is the pilot program, they can do that. But now in the future, they can refix it so that, you know, if somebody gets them to sign up now, and they teach for at least 30 days in the new school year, then they can get their money. Like, we can project that out. But right now, we can't. If you're wanting to roll this out now, for teachers to get this ball rolling, to get people to take up some of these vacancies, we cannot wait for that. So, you know, I do have some reservations on that. Like, I would like to see the teachers actually teach before they get paid. But at the same time, we need to fill these positions. So if we can get somebody to say, "Hey," and they sign the contract, that's good enough for me right now for the pilot program to fill these vacancies over. Because, I mean, they're, and we'll get to that in a second. So with that being said, you know, the incentive will be paid after May 10th contract deadline. Request utilized funding from recurring funds appropriated with the district signing bonuses. And they're looking to continue this into the 2025 budget. And that's where they can adjust that thing. So that's pretty much all they had for that. It was a long meeting. This is eight thirty, we're at, or 29 minutes right now. So it was a long meeting last night. I think we finished watching it around 10, I think it was. And then basically, they talked about the agenda items for the March 12th meeting. They didn't need the public participation and all that. And then they, you know, they did their thing, and they came out and kind of finished up. So, my takeaways from this is, and some of the ideas that I have is definitely, the reason why I'm running is definitely to take care of some of the disciplinary issues that teachers talked about. Definitely the safety aspect, and then the transparency issues of all this. You know, I, I think the board's become a lot more transparent. You know, I, I think the board's become a lot more transparent, but I would like to see even more transparency out there. I know it's hard. I've ran across it when I was a planning commissioner, getting that transparency out there is very hard because not everybody sees everything in real time. Somebody might not hear about the meeting until it's too late. It, it happens. No matter what you do besides going to knock on everybody's door five minutes before a meeting, and that's not feasible. I mean, it's just not, you know, things happen. But if we can get things out there and we find different ways of using the media or a medium that we can get this information out to people, that would be a great thing. And that's one of the things I'm gonna look at come November, hopefully, when y'all let me to school board. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the vacancies of teachers. So the vacancies of teachers, there is in Florida, Governor DeSantis did something with the military. So you come out, you, you've taken, basically, you got your associate's degree in the military. You come out, you got a certain number of college credits. But there's a fast-track way where you don't have to go through all this other college classes to teach something. So coming out of the military, let's say I wanted to be a teacher. I would have to go back and all, you know, all the college classes I've taken, I'm gonna have to go back and take all these education classes. When, you know, I've taken enough history and stuff, I know I could teach that stuff. I lived it. You know, being an airplane guy, like flight controls, all that stuff that you had to use physics on of departures of flight. You can't tell me that I couldn't be an auto mechanics teacher with mechanics. You couldn't tell me that I, I couldn't teach AutoCAD or anything like that because that's what I used every day for 20 years in the military. Items such as that. It's real-world experience that could be brought and teach certain things. Would I be a great English teacher? No, not at all. Would I be a great history teacher? Yes, and I could utilize that. And there are steps and ways of doing it, but South Carolina doesn't have it. You know, they, they make it harder, but the state of Florida, they have a great program for military. And they also have a great program for military families that come in and you know they're gonna be here for four to five years to get these teachers to fill these positions. If they're certified in another, you know, another state or whatnot, they can come in, they're military, there's gotta be a better fast-track way to do this. Instead of taking such a long time and then the hiring process through your HR department takes a long time, there's a lot that can be done and there's a lot that you can do to streamline this. And it all goes with that making Richland Two a better, a, a driven, a force to be reckoned with and not the, hey, we're gonna lead, you know, not we're gonna lead, it's, we're gonna be the number one in the world. Like, people from all over the world should be looking at how this school district does things, okay? The state of South Carolina should be looking at Richland Two and saying, this is the district. This is the model. And that's what I want for the kids out there, not just my kids that go to school in Richland Two, but my, my kids' friends. I want it for them. I want it for all them kids. You know, I coached baseball, so I coached a lot of Richland Two students. You know, me being on that baseball board, I indirectly talk to a lot of them. I might not coach their team, but I talk to a lot of them, ump games for, for them. You know, from basically kids that are in kindergarten all the way up to high school. I see it every day. And you ask them about homework. Oh, I'm struggling here, I'm struggling there, but I wish we could have this. And I hear things like that. And I want the best for them, and that's why I've decided to run. That's why I'm, I'm hyped up about it. I'm, I'm a Realtor, but I'm retired Air Force. I'm retired military. I'm retired. That's the key word, retired. So that means I can take that extra time that other people can't that have a job, a full-time job. I can take that extra time during the day to go to a school to check on something, to go help somebody, to go down to the, to the administration and sit in HR and say, hey, what do you need help with? What is the best practices? What do you need from the school board to do your job better? And not to step on anybody in administration's toes or Dr. Moore's toes, but just to come in there and talk, to work hand in hand. Because I don't believe in standing up preaching down. I believe in servant leadership where if I, whatever I can do to make sure that they have every tool necessary to do the job, that's the way it should be. And I think that being a school board member, that's the way it should be. I think being a Realtor, that's the way it should be. I think any leadership position, that's the way it should be. Why? Because that's what was taught to me in the military. A lot of people did it, some didn't. You know, the CEO of our real estate company, he talks about servant leadership. Josh Harley with Fathom, he, he talks about it all the time. Anytime he talks, he talks about servant leadership. And I wholeheartedly believe servant leadership is the way to make Richland Two better. You know, setting aside all the partisan politics and all that stuff, ultimately is what's better for the kids, right? That's what we're here to do. That's what I'm here to do. That's why I want to be elected. That's why I'm gonna put in the work. It is, I served the military for over 20 years and now I'm willing to take, after that service, I'm willing to still serve. I serve in the, being a Realtor, I serve all the time because I love working with VA, VA people. I love doing VA loans and house purchases because I know they need the help. Same thing as these kids. I know there's a lot of kids that need to help and it is up to us as a community to work together to get the help for these kids. So that's all I got. That's the whole thing wrapped up. I wish everybody, as soon as I figure out where this little thing, oh, there it goes. I wish everybody a wonderful afternoon. You know, keep watching. My website will be coming up here, probably next 30 days, I have my website up. We'll start doing some events around town so that everybody can come meet me and talk to me a little bit more. Don't get used to the beard because once it gets a little warmer, it will probably be going away. I personally like it during the winter time because it keeps my face warm when I'm out doing outdoor things. So, yeah. Because I've had a lot of people ask me about that. Man, I don't recognize you. Well, that's why. Because in the wintertime, I grow one now, and in the summertime, I kinda trim it down to the goatee. So that's probably a little bit more than y'all wanted to know. But that's the thing. I also want y'all to know me. I don't want y'all to look at me, oh, that's the guy running for school board. I want you to know Gary Dennis. I want you to know why I'm doing what I'm doing, why my heart's there, why my desire's there. Because that's what I wholeheartedly believe. To help, that's why I'm here, to do it. I mean, just do it. That's the Nike saying. That's my saying, just do it. There's no reason to sit back and moan, groan. If there's a problem, I'm gonna take it. I'm gonna run with it. I'm gonna figure it out. Because that's what I've done my whole life. That's what my parents instilled in me. That's what my grandparents instilled in me. That's what my leaders in the military instilled in me. And I'm just here to serve. So hopefully, y'all had a rundown of the agenda. I will link the agenda somewhere. Once I figure out how to do it in the video, that'd be great. But look at the, in the description, it will have the link to the agenda. You will have to go to the agenda page and click down and do it because every day it changes to a new agenda or it might go back to an old agenda. So you might have to click one or two things, but I will get you to the agenda page. That way you can see everything. The agenda page is after this, the school board meetings will definitely show the motions and votes. So you can also see that there. Once I get a little bit better with my editing of videos, I will be able to post that. And instead of looking at me, you can see what I'm talking about. So I'm gonna work on that. But I wanted to get this video out. Hopefully, I get it out today and that way you guys can see it. But hopefully, y'all have a wonderful day. Remember, in November, vote for Gary Dennis for Richland Two School Board. Thank y'all and have a wonderful day.